This conference will now be recorded.
And Jason, you have fun?
Oh, I had a blast for the first, my first time doing that. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah, they, they do a good job.
Yeah, they do.
George and Allen are a pretty good team. How's everyone doing tonight?
Hey, okay.
Fantastic.
Let's see who are we? We got a quite a turnout here. What do we got? Hey, Rachel?
Yeah, Rach.
Hi, guys.
Oh, Marlena, how are you?
I am alive. Thank you so much. Whoever posted the link.
Yeah.
Very nice to be back.
You haven't, you haven't been to one of our council meetings in quite a while.
Correct. Hi, Dad.
Oh, it's all, it's all good. You were, uh, you were a staple for a while.
Well, that's just because I can do the sneak attack now. You just don't know when I'm coming.
Sneaking up behind us? All right, we have a work session, uh, starting now. Everybody, welcome to the, uh, October 12th, two, 2021, Tenino City Council Work Session. Uh, we have nothing on the work session, so to speak, but we always have things to talk about. Uh, so I will just start off. We, we talked quite a bit about the home fund last time. And, uh, and we, uh, and we're all familiar with what that is. And there's been some, some recent developments that I wanted to share with everybody and it might, might change our course of action. It might kind of modify some of our thoughts. I, I don't know, but I'll just, I'll just share the information. So, uh, we just, we as a council, uh, or you as a council decided to direct staff to draft an ordinance, uh, for review to, uh, talk about establishing our own home fund. And as you're all aware, it was basically, uh, decide to establish our own, own home fund or accept that the county is going to establish one for us and on us, kind of like, uh, the plastic bag ban was kind of put out there. Uh, so we decided to have the, the, the home fund drafted up for us. Uh, I sent a notice to all the, the powers that be that are, that were talking about establishing the home fund. So to the county and to now some of the other mayors and, and they, they want us to be a participant. So it, it seems like there's, it kind of opened things up for negotiations or it kind of let them know that, well, we had concerns with, you know, how they, how they spend the money, how they use the money, how it seems like that money kind of goes into a black hole. And we're just throwing more money after a problem that's not being solved. Uh, the county itself put $8 million into housing issues. And, you know, it just seems like things get worse in North County and not better. Uh, I, I had a great phone call from Commissioner Mejia, uh, who acknowledges those things. And she says that she wants to kind of change the way that things are done. Uh, she wanted us to understand that this is, that Olympia has their own home fund. And this would be, if we were to join into a regional one, this would be done without Olympia. So it would be basically everyone bought them. And she proffered the idea, uh, that they do an MOU and the dollars are dispersed, kind of like the CDBG funds are dispersed where it's on a round robin basis. So our concerns, my concern was that if we do, uh, join into a regional home fund through a sales tax increase, that, uh, that money would go into a, a pot and that money would be spoken for every year, always by what I think, uh, Councilmember O'Callaghan can called the homeless industrial complex. Uh, so the, you know, the large, larger nonprofits, the, you know, kind of established organizations that, uh, exist off of, you know, kind of the, the housing dollars. Uh, our concerns with it, where that, that money would just get gobbled up into that, just like the CIP money did or does. And the response was, well, we don't want that. We want, we want, uh, all of our jurisdictions to have access to these funds. And so, uh, they said that if we were to participate, they would consider putting together an MOU where it would be down, down, round, round robin. The benefit to Tenino is our option right now is we establish our own home fund and we get about, you know, $40,000 a year. We can use that on things like, uh, fixing, you know, using, using the money to help fix up issues, maybe at the senior housing apartments or doing things like, uh, weatherization for low income homes. Uh, we could have a pot of money to help for that. But it would be limited. It would be about 40,000 a year. That, that accumulates over time. That stacks up and you can save it from year to year. And then, you know, maybe over time do big projects. So, so it's not, it's, it's not anything to, uh, look down on. But the alternative, if they were to do an MOU and we were to do a red robin thing, it would give us access to like every three years, like a million and a half, a million, million and a half dollars. And then you could do larger iss- larger projects. You could do, um, you know, you could do some, you know, lar- you know, kind of bigger lo- low income apartments, kind of like, like the, uh, the senior apartments that we have. You could build another set of those, for example. And, uh, and that, there's a need for that kind of thing too. So I want you guys to consider that. They, you know, they kind of saw it as us negotiating and responded and they've, they've thrown out a compromise. So is there any, uh, any thoughts or?
Uh, you know, my thoughts on going out for a tax, uh, on our own instead of asking the, the public. I believe if you think it's such a good idea to take our taxpayer dollars and spend it on something, you should get a buy-in from the public because it's their money to start with.
Now, I'm not saying it's a good idea. I'm saying it's going to happen whether we like it or not.
That still doesn't.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying this is a good idea. I'm saying the county is, I feel the county is going to do this. It's a councilmatic vote. They have, uh, they have the two votes to establish it. So just like the plastic bag ban or, you know, some of these other things, they're going to do it whether we like it or not. Our options are, uh, strike out on our own and strike first and do it ourselves or do nothing and, and be subject to whatever they want, which initially was not, that, that didn't leave a good taste in my mouth. Now, uh, they are trying to get us to stay in. So they're offering us more things. So it, it kind of tips, it, it changes the, the balance and it kind of changes.
Hearing the wording right, Wayne, but you're saying that, uh, they're trying to get us to stay in. That would suggest to me that there's an option for us not to be able to participate with that.
Our option to not participate is to establish our own. That's it.
So no matter what, there, it's one way or another. Take, take tax money for whatever reason, and you look at the list of stuff that they have here and the wording is, is very vague. It's, you know, it goes for this, it goes for that, but it doesn't say specifically what it really goes for. It goes for our low income housing. How do you define low income housing, especially with prices of building a house?
And if we were to establish our own, we would set those parameters.
And that's what I'm asking. How do you set the parameter on what low income housing is when every when, when every year the price of building a house goes up?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Buck, we talked about what happens with, uh, with Habitat. Habitat people, uh, that was supposed to be low income housing. And now they're just about at the point where they can't afford to do it because they can't afford the taxes. That's not low income. So to me, no matter how it goes, this is something that, that is very expensive and needs to go to a vote of the people, not a councilmatic vote. Just because the state says so, I disagree with the, with the county commissioners 100%.
Okay, noted.
To be a, a public vote, not a vote of council or the commissioners.
Well, they're just like your past.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't think any, I understand you're saying that, but like strategically, that, that doesn't really fit into the picture. I mean, it's, it's noted that you don't like it. No new taxes. John likes no new taxes. We get it.
No, that's not the point.
But what I'm saying is.
Councilmatic taxes.
Okay, yes. But what I'm saying is I believe it's going to happen regardless, whether you like it or I like it or not. So our options are, and we had this discussion last time, and it's like, whether you like it or not, I believe it's going to happen. Our choice is to do it ourselves or accept that they're going to do it and we'll, we'll live by their rules. That was last time. The landscape has changed. They have said, hey, we want you to, we want you to be part of the regional thing. So don't, please don't establish your own. If you don't establish your own, you will passively be included in our, in our initiative. And we will make sure that you have access to the funds. So that's, that is, that's all I'm saying is they're, they're, they've changed that. It's not a bad thing. You know, it, it's.
It's going to happen no matter what we do.
Yeah.
I, I understand that. I understand. I don't have the votes, but I am going to stand on principle that, that a vote without the people, their money is a bad and wrong thing to do.
Okay, you've said that.
The legislature, John, the.
Remember, I warned you guys about this two years ago.
But, okay, you've said that, right? That's not the, so that, so take that discussion, put, take that thought, put it on a shelf. All right? You already said it. What I want to know from you guys is, do you still want to go forward with the discussion about establishing our own home fund, knowing that we would have our own, medic our own rules and it would be about 40 grand a year? Or with the understanding that they're going to put together an MOU that ensures we have access to the funds, which would be a much larger pot? Would we rather participate in that? I, I feel those are our only two options. And, and, you know, we could do nothing. If, you know, if we do nothing, that it means we would be part of the regional effort. Uh, and, and Commissioner Mejia has said, you know, remember that, uh, the Regional Housing Council has had a Yelm member on its, on the board for South County. Next year, that's going to be Linda Godovac. She will be the South County rep. So Tenino will be represented. She has said she is also going to fight to get a second South County representative because she wants to make sure that these, uh, these, these housing dollars are spread a little more evenly.
So. As long as we can count on the MOA, I, I, I mean, I mean, MOU, I just don't see what the argument would even be. If, if we have a chance to, to get, say, a million dollars in two years out of this instead of $40,000 a year, I think we should go for it that way. But that's my thoughts.
Okay.
Do we know the difference in funds? So like what we would get if we went with them versus if we went on our own?
If we went on our own, it would be $35,000 to $40,000 a year. As we, you know, as we bring in more money from sales tax revenue. So the ag park is established, uh, more businesses get up and running, uh, that would increase. But, you know, it's maybe 60,000 a year if, if we really, if things really go positive. Uh, but if we participate in the regional one, it's going to be like a million to a million and a half dollars. And, you know, if, that would, you know, that's a lot of money and, you know, we would have to be, we would have to be prepared and, and positioned to be able to utilize that, which, you know, but it would also be Rainier, Bukota, Yelm. Just like the CDBG funds.
So the rotation, Wayne, the rotation would be every three years?
Theoretically. I mean, this is all, this was just dropped on me like a couple of hours ago.
Okay. Cause I know it's, it, I'm just going back and forth whether we should have our own still or go regional because I know our senior housing could definitely use it right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I don't think any of them are a right now kind of thing.
Well, I mean, I don't mean right now, but like when we do establish it, like they could use it soon.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Chief, I know that you're familiar with the legislation. Do you have any? And, and, and the county's processes and thoughts? Do you have any input outside of your chiefly role? You're muted.
I've not been a part of the conversation. Uh, to, I have not delved into this. And I, I see, I'm going back on history and I see what kind of contentious, uh, issues there have been around the CDBG money. Who gets it and how much? Uh, I mean, I've got several questions. When it comes to the third year around, there's one million, 1.5, whatever, a million available. How does that get muted out or split up between the cities in the south? Um, and who determines that? Who's, I imagine the county's administering that. So they would have control of the funds. Uh, I don't know how they would define affordable housing. Uh, but affordable housing in Tenino will be vastly different than it is in Lacey or Tumwater. Uh, so those are issues I would be concerned with. Uh, and you're not asking me, but maybe you have. I would like to keep it in-house. But there is something to be said for leveraging, uh, the county dollars. But in, but in the interim, you're giving up your, uh, 40 or 50 or 60 grand a year to the county to use as they see fit. Until it comes back time for your, um, rotation, with or without competing with the other cities in the South County.
Yeah. There, there's a lot of money that would be collected in the county and the county as a, like geographically, isn't, it, it's not built for things like if you wanted to build a senior apartment. The county, county zoning doesn't really make for that. So it's almost like the county would be collecting all that money, but it would have to be used within the cities.
So it would be us, Bukota, Rainier, Yelm, Lacey and Tumwater.
And the unincorporated county.
And that's the three.
Except Olympia.
Yeah. And that would, that's still, that would be a three-year rotation for us?
Um, that, I'm, I'm thinking that, that, that there's, the MOU is not written. But if it's done like the CDBG, it would be one year Tumwater gets it, one year Lacey gets it. And then another year, the four South County cities get it, I would imagine. That's one way that the, the cat could be skinned.
I'd want to see how they write up their MOU first.
I think that's wise.
It would be the four South County cities and unincorporated, uh, rural Thurston County.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm not going to make a decision until I see their MOU.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Rachel, do you have any thoughts?
No, I agree with Jason. It'd be better just to see it all written out so that we know what we're looking at before we make any decisions moving forward.
Okay.
I agree with Jason also.
Uh, Marlena didn't like my skinned cat analogy. I apologize to all the cat lovers out there. No cats were harmed in the making of this council meeting. Uh, Mr. O'Callaghan, uh, we, we know your thoughts about that, what you said. So no rehashing your, your, what, what you said, but do you have any other things to contribute before we move on?
Yeah, you just got to look at how the county's always, uh, treated South County. Look at, uh, Linda. She's going to be the only one from South County on there. Why? Because there's four, there's four jurisdictions down here that would have voting power and could potentially out, out, uh, strip that committee almost all the time. That's why we, you know, it, this just puts us in a bad position all the way around as, as well as the other part.
I did explain that to Carolina. I was like, you know, it's, it's well and good that you want more South County representation, but there's a lot of interests that don't want that. Because it, it, uh, it tips the scales in the, you know, in the way, the way the voting goes. So, and at one point we did have a majority on some of these housing, uh, housing fund committees. And, you know, the, it was, it was, it was fought against and, and we were kind of like, uh, we were, we were sent packing. Okay. I'm going to try and bang out some of the, uh, reports before we get into our meeting. So.
EPP is tomorrow.
Okay. Let's, uh, oh, man.
Fire is Thursday.
Okay.
So that's two down.
Agenda. Chief, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor and, uh, City Council. The fire, uh, perhaps you heard about it. October 3rd, there was a trailer fired in the area of Seventh and Houston. Thankfully, uh, no injuries and, uh, fire was a, uh, the fire was put out. The investigator from West Thurston Regional Fire Authority determined it was an accidental cooking fire, which is why I cook in my house. Um, and, uh, that was the end of the report. It was a very nice, thick report on their investigative, investigation of the fire. Um, and then we, uh, I talked to you about Lexi Poll last council meeting and we are signed up with Lexi Poll slash Police One. All the officers are now, yeah, logged in. So we can take advantage of, uh, they can take advantage of the training offered by, uh, Police One via Lexi Poll. And, uh, Sean McGrath, uh, is started today. We actually started a couple of weeks ago, but he was in today to get suited up, get his firearms qualification, all that, regamarol done and begin as a reserve police officer. And he'll be a welcome addition. He comes from Lewis County, uh, Sheriff's Office from the Corrections Division. And let me see, there was one other one. Oh, and the chief, uh, the chief recruiting update. We have three hard applications in, in hand. And, um, we've extended this till the end of the month, uh, to gather more. And I'm, I met with, uh, one individual who may want to, uh, I think he's going to apply and spoke with another individual. He may, he's considering it right now. So even if we get four and possibly five candidates, that's a good, uh, it's a good mix, uh, for, uh, moving on with the process for hiring a police chief for Tenino. And I'm open for any questions anybody might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is George Sharp? I don't think I see him in, on here yet. Um, let us go to City Clerk Treasure. Do you have a report for us?
Hello. Um, other than just trying to finish up getting my figures for the budget, that's pretty much all I have to report. Um, I guess the letter is on here, so I don't need to address that because you'll get to that. There's a letter further down. Anyway, um, no, just trying to get comfortable into my role and and get that budget done.
Okay. Thank you. Jody, I see you're with us. Do you have a report for the food bank, for the community service center?
Um, not a whole lot. Uh, we are working on, um, getting a cover put on the courtyard so that we can keep our volunteers out of the elements. Uh, but that's a, that's about it. We're working with a local, um, contractor. Grants have been written. We now need to, um, make the next step and talk to, um, LG. See if he agrees with the, what we want to do there. But we got to get them out of the rain. And it was pretty cold for them today. So we're going to try and bring some heat with, uh, heat to them tomorrow, uh, next week. Um, and that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jody.
Ms. Mayor?
Sir.
Oh, uh, Jody, do you need a letter of support from the city to help you with that grant?
Um, I have, um, a letter from the mayor from last year. Um, it would be, it would be helpful. Um, since we are delivering to upwards of 60 shut-ins a, a week now. Um, and they seem to be growing. Uh, the other thing I guess I should say is that if there are any folks in Tenino or Bukota or in, within the, the the school district that have to stay home due to COVID, we will deliver food to them. So they don't have to go out. So they, they just need to give us a call, which means my cell number, which everybody pretty much has anyway.
Jody, on the delivery, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the deliveries, did you ever get, um, help to make the deliveries to go up the stairs? Cause I believe, um, I asked the Boy Scouts and they said that they were going to reach out to you because that's something that maybe they can help with as well for delivery.
Well, part of the problem with that is that we do this in the morning and they are in school. So, um, I, we just had, Pat and I had a meeting with the superintendent and he is wanting to, um, get back to basics, basically, um, with the high school kids for doing some community service. And so we're looking at getting those high schools students in there. Um, the, one of the problems with the, with the Boy Scouts is that we have to have their parents there. Because not all the Boy Scout, not every Boy Scout will drive or can get out of school uh, to be able to do this. And working with the high school kids, they have a class, um, a leadership class that allows them to be able to leave school for about an hour to deliver to our senior, um, apartments. We have three sites, um, currently in Tenino that we serve that is upstairs. So we find the youngest of the seniors, uh, folks that are at the food bank, uh, to huff that stuff up the stairs. Uh, so there's twice a month that it gets, uh, pretty dicey for them. And then if it's icy, I, you know, I'm like, please be careful. Please be careful. Oh God, please be careful.
All right.
I don't need, so.
I'm going to cut you off. It is 7:20. It's 7:29.
We're good.
All right. Our 7:27. We got a couple more minutes.
Maybe you can update that letter, that letter of support.
Okay. Yeah. Jody, if you need me to update that, let me know and we'll, uh, we'll take care of that. Okay?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Yep. All right. It is 7:30. Let the record show that all council members are present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hite. We have an agenda before us needing approval.
You approve second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the minutes for the 9/28/2021 meeting.
No approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of 9/28/2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar. This is payroll. This is the consent calendar, September 29th, 2021 through October 12th, 2021. Payroll EFTs in the amount of $52,535.05. Claims checks number 30160 through 30183 and EFTs in the amount of $48,934.62 for a grand total of $101,469.67. It's a little more than, uh, usual because there was some, uh, Department of Revenue payments that we made and, uh, that, that were a little heavier than typical. Uh, and Department, Department of Retirement. Liquor and cannabis license, none. And a letter recommending that the city reject the sole bid received from the waiting pool renovation. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session and no presentations. That brings us to public comment. We got a lot of extra people in the audience tonight, so I'd love to hear some public comment. Uh, if you're a member of the public and you'd like to provide comments tonight, uh, just mic up. Let us know your name and your address and you'll be given three minutes to provide. Uh, just mic up, let us know your name and your address and you'll be given three minutes to provide comment to council. If you're a little shy at the beginning, we also have a comment section at the end. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, go ahead and mic up. Last chance, public comment. Going once. Going twice, moving along and you'll you'll get a second opportunity. Uh, we have no public hearings. That brings us to proclamations. Um, before I bring this proclamation up, I I've been asked, Dan Fisher. We would like, we're going to present this proclamation. Linda, is this correct at a at the next Chamber of Commerce meeting? Linda?
No, it's going to be at the Thanksgiving meeting, the November seventeenth.
So the request is that Dan Fisher not include this in his write up.
Exactly.
For us, you can, you can, you can, if you'd like, but we're we. We were hoping that we could surprise the Heddins family with this. So this is a proclamation by the City of Tenino. This is a proclamation by request of Mayor Fournier, council members Lawton, Callahan, Gotavac and Davidson, whereas Heddins Film Family Pharmacy has been serving Tenino. Since nineteen fifty three and whereas Heddins Family Pharmacy was created with a mission to serve Tenino community and. Whereas the Heddins family has provided customer care for the community of Tenino for nearly seventy years. And whereas several members of the Heddins family have served in various public service roles during that time, including. Uh, Mayor of the City of Tenino, Tenino Rockhounds, Corveman Car Club, and whereas, keep going down, please. The Heddins family and pharmacy continues to serve and enrich the community at large. Now therefore, I Wayne Fournier, Mayor of the City of Tenino and the Tenino City Council Members. Do hereby proclaim the celebration of the Heddins family contribution to the community of Tenino. Uh, this was prompted by they they recently sold the business. You you'll still see them in there working. The family's still very much involved. However, they did, they did sell Heddins. So we want to say thank you for all that they've done over the almost the last seventy years. So I am.
Also, also, Wayne, can I add to that? They're still, it's still gonna be called Heddins.
Yeah.
It's just being bought from somebody else, but the Heddins name will still be there.
Yes, sir.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Old Business Review and Approve Amendment for the Ritter Street Water Line Replacement.
No approval.
So this is an amendment to the contract that is updating some of the information to allow for the water line replacement when we do the. Uh, renovations and repairs to run Ritter Street. Uh, recommended action is motion to approve amendment for Ritter Street Water Line Replacement. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I like that. It's only five thousand dollars. That's good.
Awesome. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, new business, none. Resolutions, none. Ordinance six ordinance nine nineteen review. So this was a, this is the ordinance drafted. Uh, to establish a home fund. Uh, we're just reviewing this tonight. Uh, it is on the agenda and if we take no action, we will leave it on the agenda. Uh, we had some discussion about the kind of, kind of the changing landscape of our considerations. For for what we do going forward during the work session. Uh, there were several council members that said they want to now hold off and wait until we see what the county produces for an MOU. Uh, if that is the wishes of the council, then no action need be taken. Uh, or if there's anything else the council would like to do now is your opportunity.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know how I'll vote no matter what, but I do think it's important to see what the county is going to. Tell us that they're willing to do.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, that's what we talked about in the work session.
Okay, okay, yeah. No decisions were made in the work session. Uh, and and no, nothing definitive is being done now, so we will, this will remain on the agenda under old business. All right, that brings us to reports. Uh, is George Sharp in the house in the easy for sheezy? Where's George? Is he not with us? Okay. That is fine. We'll keep moving.
Well, real quick, the chamber meeting is going to be next Wednesday, but it's going to be in the evening. It's going to be live and virtual. Uh, so it starts at five thirty, goes to about seven thirty. And I believe it was us, uh, the publisher from the. Uh, Centrion News that's going to be one of the moderators to, because there was some discussion of being fair and unbiased.
Yeah, whenever we do one of these council or one, whenever, I know when I've hosted. A, a, a candidate forum, I try to bring somebody in from out of town just because it feels a little better and. It's a, it's a nice way to do it. It's a little more inviting. So I I believe it's the twentieth. Uh, is the chamber meeting and it will be an opportunity for people to meet council candidates.
And we, we changed it to, they changed it to evening so that more people, the people at work have a chance to come and ask questions of the candidates.
Excellent. Okay.
Zoom in because I've got to be up in Marysville.
Okay. Uh, EDC, no report, VCB, fired us twelve, no report, library. Good evening, library.
Hello, um, so I don't have much to report except one, um, that I think is a significant item for Timberland. Which is administration just signed a lease for a new location in Hawks Prairie. Um, it's going to be located at the, there's a shopping center at the corner of Marvin and Martin and the grocery outlet is in there. Um, probably won't open until January because there's some construction work that needs to be in there. But I think it's exciting that we're able to add a new location to serve people in that area. Who either live there or work in that area. So just wanted to give everybody a heads up about that. Otherwise, we're still at the library Tuesday through Saturday and love to see everybody. So come by when you can.
Thank you, Linda. Tenino Community Service Center gave us a report. Arch Commission, no report. Social Service Commission, SOT Improvement Grant Review Committee. Uh, we signed.
I want to something. Um, I'm going to contact the two people that haven't. That applied and have not started painting the outside of their building to remind them that it needs to be done by the end of the year. And we're slowly, we're quickly running out of good weather for any kind of painting. So I'm going to contact them and see what's going on.
Okay. Planning Commission, I attended the Planning Commission meeting last Saturday. Uh, it was a walkabout through the city of Tenino. And they were looking at available lands. They were looking at zoning, uh, looking at easements and alleyways. And it was a good chance for the Planning Commission to get out with some guests, some citizens. And some business owners and and go around and talk about planning commission issues and and it was a good walk. Uh, Rainey joined us, uh, Aslan from the EDC joined us and and the whole planning commission there. So it was good. Uh, Public Safety, Chief of Police, Director of Public Works, uh, met with the Director of Public Works today. Uh, the septic receiving, uh, process or septic receiving. Department, I don't know what we're calling it, is up and running and it's going well. We've been bringing in about a thousand dollars a day in revenue. Uh, and it's, you know, solid waste comes in from the septic trucks. It's, it's mostly liquid and fluid and it gives us a chance to capture that waste and treat it. Uh, so it's good for the environment and it's good for our treatment plant and it's good for the city of Tenino's. Uh, pocketbook. So that is going well. We have, we now have three septic haulers that we're in business with. And we're, you know, moving that process along and it's going to be growing. Uh, but a thousand dollars a day is is pretty good new revenue stream. So we're, we're happy with that so far. City Planner, Building Official, Rainey, would you like to give a report as a building official?
Sure, I'll give it a shot. So as of now, nothing really much new. Um, I just came back over, was gone full week last week up in Bellevue, passed my ICC permit technician certification. So I will now be able to handle out permits through the city. And I'm now here in Vancouver, enjoying myself here in this seminar to the end of the week to get my ICC Residential Building Inspector Certification. Um, outside of that, while I was home over the weekend, I noticed a few violations that I had handed out and. Uh, looks like the people came into compliance with those violations that I handed through the month of September. Other than that, guys, that's all I got right now.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, City Clerk Treasure, we spoke to my report. Uh, like I said, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. I was really happy to get the chance to do that. Uh, went to a ribbon cutting ceremony for ship lap, uh, coffee and quilting. If you haven't had a chance to go there yet, it's a great new Tenino business. And, uh, and then along with Councilmember Lawton, represented the city of Tenino in the Buca Casket Racing Derby and we brought home two trophies. We are the fastest, uh, fastest mayor in Thurston County. Pretty cool, I guess. There was only, there was only two other mayors. So beating out, yeah. Uh, beating out Alan Carr, you know, he's pretty quick, but not quick enough. Uh, but it was a blast and and Buca is doing really cool stuff all October. Uh, so I would encourage everybody to go down there and check it out. Uh, Sage and I went through the haunted house. She went through the whole thing this year instead of. Uh, getting really scared in the first little room and she she had a really good time. It was a lot of fun. So definitely go check that out. And they've got, if you look at their event calendar, they got a bunch of different things going on. They've got some. Uh, like some kind of contest with the maybe a two K or something like that. And then there's a few other events going on. Uh, so. Check it out. That's my report. Be that. Do you have anything for us, Councilmember Lawton?
Yeah, a couple of things. They are having also in Buca, their little fun, family fun event on October thirtieth. In Buca there along the main street. Uh, you can win prizes by carving your pumpkins and. And your Halloween costumes and stuff like that. If you need more information, just get ahold of me or go to the Be That Facebook page. And then also don't forget the medicine take back drop off on October twenty third at the police station.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Community Investment Partnership, Solid Waste Advisory Board, uh, Steady, Steady, uh, Councilmember O'Callahan, do you have a report from Steady?
No, I missed the last one. The next one, I believe that George said is next Friday. And I believe it's.
Uh, TCOM, Tenino School Board.
Uh, District Update. So all four schools are or have gotten a facelip. So if you've been through Parkside or by Parkside, you'll see that they got a new portable and it adds two extra classrooms. Um, and I believe it's for the kindergarten. Um, they updated their security system, their fire system, and they paved the way for the infrastructure. To allow future portables. So, you know, that'll really help Parkside expand because. We just seem to have more and more kids coming into our community. So. Um, the elementary and middle school, they got brand new carpets in some of the classrooms and at the middle school. They got, um, brand new carpet in the band room. And the elementary school, if you guys are, you know, went to the district, if you ever went to the elementary school, they have those orange curtains that are up on the stage. Well, those are finally getting replaced. So the orange curtains are coming down. I'm not sure what kind of curtains they're going to go with, but. That's going to be, I know that was on the list for a very long time. Um, and then the high school, so over at the boys' baseball field, they're adding the new drainage system. To keep the field from flooding. So that's been a pretty big project, but it's looking good now. Um, their gym floor has a brand new finish on it, so it looks totally brand new and, um, very professional. It looks really nice. And so their library also is getting converted to a student success center. Um, and I'm not sure what the difference is, what exactly that entails for the kids. But they removed all of the bookshelves, so there's no more shelves in there with books on them. They're all the chairs and the desks. So I'm not sure if it's kind of gearing them up for college or, um, a chance to really make up work. I'm not quite sure. So I'll find that out and let you guys know at the next meeting what exactly a student success center means, but. Other than that, um, the district is doing some great things.
Thank you, Councilmember Davidson. TRPC, that was Cutter. TPB, they're not meeting yet, according to Councilmember O'Callahan. That brings us to public comment period number two. Now we've got all these guests. I really hope that we can get some, we're going to listen to some public comments from somebody. Is there anyone that is joining us tonight that would like to provide some public comment?
Oh, yes, please. This is Marlena Mulkins.
Thank you.
I live on Bowen Way. Uh, in Tenino City Limits and the comment I have, uh, one is that's wonderful news about the septic. Uh, that we're able to make money on that. Um, where is that money going and are these funds going to be something that? We can use to lower the cost to the constituents for having the service in town. I know that that. Typically comes up a few times on different Facebook. Um, groups throughout the year about the high cost of our water and sewer. Um, and then the other thing I'm so excited to have Ship Lap here. That is awesome. And having Vanessa at the tattoo place, I mean, Tenino is just, we're awesome. I just have to say that.
That's great. Yeah, and I haven't been in to meet Vanessa yet, but I I understand you went and got a tattoo from her.
I got two of them and I got one for my niece.
Awesome. Uh, just briefly to the, as far as the septic receiving revenue, that that is the vision. Uh, we, we don't know exactly how much impact it's going to have yet because we don't know how much. Uh, you know, once it's really, really up and running, how much we're going to be bringing in in revenue, but ideally. That revenue would come in. It has to stay in the sewer fund. So it can't be, that money can't come in and then we use it to pay for park toys. Uh, the way that utilities are set up, they're called proprietary funds and they have to be a standalone, essentially a business. And they have to be set up to fund themselves. That's why, one of the reasons that we're. Uh, so kind of locked in on what our utility fees have to be. Uh, but the, the goal is and the dream is to bring in additional revenue so that we can. Use it to keep the, the utility fees down. Because we, when we did our last fee study, we were told that we had to increase the utility fees. Like two to three percent per year, every year. We haven't done that because we've been able to run it well. But ideally, we'd, we'd be bringing in additional revenue that could be used and applied to that, that debt. That, that, that is, that, that debt service is what is, uh, the, really the big expense on everybody's utility bill. So if we, if we start bringing in enough money, we would be able to apply. Some of that money that we're bringing in to the debt service and and that may. Uh, that may be able to drop down some of, some people's utility fees. Uh, but it also may be able to keep it from creeping up. So, you know, it's still a moving target. We're still figuring out what's going, what it's going to mean to us. But we're, we're moving in a positive direction. So good question. Thank you, Marlena. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to provide comment? Now's your chance. It doesn't have to be nice things.
I'm down on Lincoln Avenue. Uh, no real comment, just glad to be able to make it live for once.
Yeah, thanks for joining us. You have to say, longtime listener, first time caller.
There we go. Longtime listener, first time caller.
Okay, uh, if there's no one else that would like to provide public comment, we're going to keep moving on. So now's your last chance, going once. Going twice. Moving on. That brings us to announcements. Is there anyone that would like to provide an announcement?
No, but I got a question. Uh, I believe it was at our last meeting that we talked about, uh, an ordinance for the parks on when it's, uh, closing and opening hours. How are we doing on that?
I'm sorry. I will, uh, I will get back to you on that.
Thank you. Also, if, uh, we're, if we're gonna start looking at some things, uh, are we going to look at, uh, trespass laws?
Elaborate.
Uh, for example, you know what I do at night and, uh, sometimes if we do not have permission for trespass, we can't chase the vagrants off. Uh, but if we do have that and they don't leave, we can call the police and the police will come either chase them off or charge them with trespass. Uh, I don't think we have anything like that on, on the books, it supports our police department.
We have trespass laws that are, you know, established in the, in the penal codes. And we, we do, you know, like if, uh, some, you know, the supermarket, if, if Dave's Thriftway doesn't want somebody coming back in, they have to tell our police officers that they want them trespassed. We have to serve them a notice saying that they are trespassed from that location and then they can't come back. So we have that kind of thing, uh, we, we, we deal with in the park sometimes, we have to trespass people from the park. But then it becomes a matter of enforcement, uh, when you, when you, if you were to try and arrest somebody for trespass, especially somebody that is, that is maybe like, uh, you know, a disenfranchised, you know, kind of houseless type person, there, it's really hard to get that into the, into a prosecutor's hands and have them take action on it. So there's a dance that, that is done, but, uh, but we do do our best. So I'm not sure like what you're asking for beyond what we have established in.
I, I have, uh, I have the, uh, Lacy trespass rules and it seems to work very well. I'll get that to Chief and let him take a look at it.
Yep, bring that forward for us, we'd appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other announcements, Linda?
Yes.
Not Linda, but Linda Librarian?
Yes, Linda Librarian. Um, I just wanted to mention, since George wasn't here, about October, that October is now Arttober. And there are, um, a couple of events where the deadline is coming up. It's the, um, coloring contest and the scarecrow contest. And the deadline is October sixteenth. And if you need a entry form for either one, we have them on the bulletin board outside the library. And if you have your application and, um, it's, uh, I mean, your entry and it's ready to, to be submitted, please drop it off at the library.
Thank you, announcement.
I wanna mention that the, uh, scarecrow contest has been, uh, extended out to the thirty-first of October.
Oh, that's great news, hopefully we'll get some more participants then.
And I wanna mention that the scarecrow contest just had a big new contender step into the arena. Uh, our City Hall staff and public work staff, led by, uh, Jen Sharber, put together a whiz-bang scarecrow. And Jen, did you name it yet?
We're working on that.
Okay.
I had a different announcement though, not about, not to toot my horn about the scarecrow.
You've had sixteen Shiplap donuts this week?
Only two, but, uh, no, I wanted to announce that we are gonna host trick-or-treating at City Hall this year, we're super excited, um, on Halloween.
Can we call it City Halloween?
City Halloween, City Halloween, City Halloween, gotcha. Um, and also I know there's a few PTA mamas on here right now and they are hosting a trunk-or-treat over at Parkside on Central on Friday, the twenty-ninth. So, um, check their Facebook page, it's all over the place, but just sharing that for them.
Awesome, thank you. Any other announcements from council or guests?
One other because it's, it's good for these young women, uh, the Miss Thurston County is this Saturday. It's over at South Pewtersham, uh, uh, Community College. And I believe it starts at about four o'clock in the afternoon and tickets are still on sale, just go to missthurstoncounty.org.
Thank you, sir. All right, any further announcements, last chance? Meeting adjourned.
Nondebatable motion, fare thee well, one and all.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, goodnight.